Welcome, everybody, to the Illinois Supreme Court Rules Committee public hearing. Today is Wednesday, April 23, 2025. Welcome to all the committee members. Justice O'Brien, thank you. Our new committee members, Justice Porter and Mr. Cotten. The hearing today will get started. I will let the speakers who are on the list know that we are on a schedule. You each will have 10 minutes. I hate to be rude, but that's part of the job, and if you start going over, we're going to have to cut you off. The committee members may have some questions for you. Please be ready to answer those if we have any. We have been provided, as you can imagine, all the written materials. We have been provided the written comments that were also submitted, so we are familiar with the item on the agenda. That being said, I will call out the speaker and the proposal that you are here to speak on, and we will get started. Before we do, I think today is Administrative Assistance Day, and I would just say there isn't probably anyone in this room that isn't here but for the work of a good assistant or two. So do your best to thank them along the way, and I was nice enough to say thanks to mine before I left last night. That being said, we will get started. The first proposal on the agenda is 2415, which is amending Supreme Court Rule 703 on Educational Requirements, and our first speaker is Lexi Rice, representing the Board of Admissions. Good morning.
Good morning. There we go. My name is Lexi Rice. I'm a staff attorney with the Illinois Board of Admissions to the Bar. Here with me is Eric Lorenz, who is the Director of Admissions to Illinois Board of Admissions to the Bar. So I'm here to speak about two proposals. The first is 24-15.
Yes, and I'll just say you're also speaking on 2416?
Yes, that's correct.
That's amending Rule 704 on the qualification on examination.
That's correct, yes. So first, 2415. We are seeking to amend Supreme Court Rule 703, which pertains to the educational requirements required to seek admission to the bar on examination. The memo that we submitted explains our proposal in greater detail, but briefly, we are, the board is seeking to eliminate reference to the preliminary and college work, as that language is redundant with the ABA requirements, and the board seeks to define what is meant by first degree in law as a JD or an LLB, a Juris Doctorate, or a Bachelor's of Law, and to clarify that an LLM or an SJD is not a first degree in law. This is not a substantive change, but rather meant to preempt questions from prospective applicants regarding what a first degree in law means. Mostly, this kind of question comes from our foreign-licensed applicants, who may not be familiar with the U.S. legal educational system. We get this question enough that we felt it warranted a specific call-out in the rule. From my understanding, the only response to this proposal was from the ISBA, who expressed their support for the proposal. If the committee has any questions pertaining to Proposal 2415, I'd be happy to address those now.
I only had one.
Sure.
Can you get an LLM without a JD?
[laughing]
How is that possible, that that could be your first degree?
Well, if you are licensed and have gotten your education in a foreign country, you can then come to the U.S. and get an LLM from an ABA institution.
Okay. We don't, is it currently that the rule does not count that out-of-country degree as a first degree? It has to be?
It's not a, it wouldn't be from a first degree in law from an ABA-accredited institution, yes.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions pertaining to this proposal? Okay. Well, then I will move on to the next, which is Proposal 24-16. The board is seeking to amend Rule 704, which pertains to qualification on examination, otherwise known as the bar exam. Again, our memorandum submitted explains in greater detail, but briefly, the board has suggested various changes in light of the upcoming transition to the Next Gen exam, which Illinois has announced that it plans to administer beginning in 2028, and the decommission of the Uniform Bar Exam, or otherwise known as the UBE, which Illinois currently offers to applicants. In light of this upcoming transition, the board recommends revising the language of Rule 704D to more broadly describe the bar exam, rather than refer to a specific exam. This change would allow for the selection of the specific version of the exam and other details related to the administration of the exam to be incorporated into the Illinois Board of Admission to the Bar rules of procedure, rather than requiring further, excuse me, rather than requiring further amendments to Rule 704D as more details regarding the Next Gen exam are determined. The remaining proposed amendments are what we consider cleanup amendments, to tighten up the language in the rule and to eliminate language that is no longer necessary. Specifically, the board seeks to define NCBE as the abbreviation for the National Conference of Bar Examiners in Rule 704C, to clarify the relationship between the board and the court regarding the setting of the passing score for the bar exam and the professional responsibility exam, and that's also set in 704C, and to eliminate the first clause of 704D, which references the effective date of the rule. This language is no longer necessary, as the effective date of adding Rule 704F or D was in 2007, which was more than four years ago, and thus, that transitional language is no longer necessary. I understand that two responses to this proposal have been submitted. The first, from the ISBA, supports the proposal. The second response was submitted by a former employee of the board. The response does not take issue with any of the proposed changes to Rule 704, but instead suggests an additional change to Rule 704F. Rule 704F currently states a passing score on the Illinois bar exam is valid for four years from the last date of examination. The response proposes that Rule 704F be amended to state an individual applicant's passing score is valid from the date of the examination administered to the applicant. The rationale for the suggested change is that some applicants take the exam over an extended number of days, instead of the traditional two days. The proposal suggests it would be more equitable to extend the deadline for expiration of the scores to the last date the individual applicant took the exam. The board has considered this proposal, but does not see a reason to change the board's proposal for a variety of reasons. First, the response is based on an incorrect assumption about how the rule works. Regardless of when an applicant finishes the exam, all scores are released on the exact same day. Thus, there's no disadvantage to those applicants who test over four days instead of two. In fact, the response would actually provide an advantage to those applicants who test over an extended day, rather than leveling playing field, as their scores would then be valid for additional days over the standard two-day applicant. Second, to implement this change, frankly, would be an administrative nightmare. The applicants would have to identify themselves as someone who has taken the exam over extended time, which applicants traditionally do not want to do. Then, the, our staff would have to calculate, they'd have to look up their exam, see when they took it. It just would be a mess, to be honest. Right now, all the applicants who are sitting for the July 2025 exam, they know that their scores will expire on the same date, on July 30, 2029. And finally, this version of the rule has been in effect for a long time, since 2007. It has worked for many years, and it has never been an issue. There's just no reason to adopt the change proposed in the response. If the board were to adopt any change, perhaps it would change the last date of the examination, that's the language in the rule, to state the Wednesday of the examination, similar to the change proposed in Proposal 2417, but otherwise, it's really just not necessary. If there are any questions about this proposal, I'd be happy to address them now.
Any committee members have any questions? I have one.
Sure, of course.
On the, and it's more of a clarification. So, in Section 1, you're deleting the specific reference to the Uniform Bar Examination based on a test that is not going to go into place until 2028, correct?
Right, right. So, instead of specifically identifying the UBE, we are taking out that specific identification in anticipation of adopting the Next Gen exam.
And just wanted to get out, very far ahead of the Next Gen, even though it doesn't go into place until 2028?
Right. We're just looking forward, because we're going to be, over the course of the next year, determining what the cut score will be and determining when we will, in fact, first administer that. So, because this rule process does take some time, we wanted to make sure that we are ahead of this and can get that rule in place before we have to have the rule in place.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much for your time.
Eric Lorenz will be talking about Proposals 2417 and 2418. Again, these talk about Rule 704A and 706.
Thank you. Good morning, Justice O'Brien and members of the Rules Committee. I'm Eric Lorenz, and I'm the Director of Administration for the Board of Admissions to the Bar. As you stated, I will be talking about Proposals 2417 and 2418. The first proposal, 24-17, proposes amendments to Rule 704A, which is the rule for admission by transferred UBE score. The Board of Admissions is proposing to amend the rule in two main respects and is also proposing a couple of cleanup amendments. The first main respect in which we want to amend Rule 704A is to clarify in Paragraph A of the rule the date on which a score on the UBE is deemed to be attained, and the date we are proposing for that is the Wednesday of the week in which the bar exam was administered. The reason for this change, as Ms. Rice alluded to, is to provide certainty to all applicants as to the date on which their score will expire. They will all know what Wednesday, what was the last day of their bar exam. Again, Mr., there were comments by Mr. Schuster with respect to Paragraph A of Rule 704A, again, to extend the period for those who are non-standard examines, who might need another day or two to complete the exam, and for the same reasons that Ms. Rice explained, the board does not see any reason to make that change. We have certainty, we will have certainty with the rule that we propose, and without that, we would incur the administrative burdens of individually tracking the length of time when a test was administered to each applicant. Moreover, for Rule 704A, the tests are administered in another jurisdiction, which would add another layer of administrative burden, and for the same reasons that Ms. Rice explained, really, all applicants receive their score on the same day, and so, they would have the same period of time from the date they receive their score until the four years after the Wednesday of the week in which they took the bar to submit a request to transfer their score. So that's the first main proposal. Are there any questions on that aspect of our proposal regarding Rule 704A?
Judge Porter?
Just one question. Just one question. Historically, has it always been on a Wednesday, or do these rules provide you flexibility to give those scores beyond that Wednesday, say, if there's an administrative issue or otherwise?
The bar exam is always administered on the last Tuesday and Wednesday of February or July, if that was your question. In terms of when we get the scores out, that's not for weeks or months after. For the February exam, we typically release, the scores are typically released in early April, and for the July bar exam, they're typically released in October. But again, these are different jurisdictions that we're talking about, so their schedule may vary.
I guess, more specifically, by putting a specific day of the week, does that give you flexibility to, say, do it on Thursday or Friday? Do the rules speak to giving you some discretion and flexibility if we put a hard and fast day of the week in the rule?
In terms of flexibility, the court has the inherent authority to address special circumstances by way of petition, and what would happen is somebody who felt that they needed an additional period of time would submit a petition to the board, requesting that relief, I'm sorry, would submit a petition to the court, and those petitions then are sent over to the board. The board considers them and makes a recommendation to the court.
So, I guess the question then, or the reason that we don't go with the date the scores are released is because, you said, that date changes by juris, or varies by jurisdiction?
Yes, and that would create another administrative burden, track, and even Illinois, depending on the days of the week, that, you know, the 1st of April is a target date, but it may fall on a Saturday or a Sunday, and so, we, the easy date is just to pick the, a date that everybody knows, and that would be the Wednesday of the bar exam week.
Which is always, like you said, the last Tuesday and Wednesday, of July, last Tuesday and Wednesday of February?
Exactly.
Okay.
All right. If there are no more questions about that aspect of our proposal, I will turn to the second main respect in which the board is asking to amend Rule 704A, and that would be by expanding Rule 704A, Paragraph B, to allow certain graduates of foreign law schools to transfer their UBE score to Illinois. At present, Illinois allows both graduates of ABA-approved law schools and graduates of foreign law schools to sit for the bar exam. Foreign law school graduates have to meet additional requirements primarily concerning having five, having practiced law under one of their, under a license, which could be a U.S. license or their foreign license for five of the preceding seven years. However, on the side of allowing transfer scores of, under Rule 704A, the current rule only limits that to graduates of ABA-approved law schools. So the reason for this proposed change is to create symmetry between those who can get admitted to the bar in Illinois by taking the Illinois version of the UBE, which is the same as everybody's, but the Illinois administration of the UBE or the administration in another jurisdiction. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. And finally, with respect to Proposal 24-17, the board is proposing a couple of minor cleanup amendments to Rule 704E and F. And the first change, again, has to do with removing some transitional language that no longer applies. This is Rule 704A, Paragraph E, which required that a person shall not be eligible for admission prior to November 7, 2019. We're now well past that. And then, the other cleanup change is to add a clarification at the end of old Paragraph F, which is now going to be Paragraph E, stating that, in addition to the requirements set forth in this rule, in Paragraph E, the applicant must satisfy all other applicant, other requirements of Rule 704A. Any more questions on Rule 704A or this proposal?
No, thank you.
The board's fourth and final proposal is Proposal 24-18, and this proposes rule amendments to Illinois Supreme Court Rules 706 and 716. And Proposal 24-18 proposes to amend the Rule 706 in four main respects, one of which concerns the fee structure for applications under Rule 716 relating to limited admission of House Counsel. And for the change in fee structure under Rule 716, the board is also proposing complementary changes to Rule 716 itself. The first main aspect in which the board proposes to amend Rule 706 is to adjust the fees for first time and repeat applicants to sit for the Illinois bar examination. That includes two fee components, one being the examination fee and the other being the character and fitness registration fee. The application fee, I'm sorry, the character and fitness registration fee generally is only paid one time, and even if an applicant fails the bar, they would not have to pay the registration fee again, rather, they would just have to pay a reexamination fee. The, the key points about this proposal to increase these fees is that the fees have not been changed for, have not been increased since 2014 for the bar exam fees and since at least 2004 for the character and fitness registration fee, and the fee increases that we are proposing are less than the Consumer Price Index over that same period of time. In support of the proposed increases, the board notes that their costs have increased for all aspects of administering the admissions rules in the intervening years since the fees were last increased, and the costs that have increased include overhead, supplies, equipment, employee costs, and investigation costs. The board therefore feels it is necessary to propose these changes in fees pursuant to Rule 706.
So if you failed the bar, would you have to then pay the character and fitness fee again as well, or is it?
No, just, just the reexamination fee. The character and fitness process, the way the character and fitness process works is that if an applicant fails the bar, we will put processing of their character and fitness application on hold, but once they file, once they submit a, an application to take the next bar exam or a subsequent bar exam, the processing of the character and fitness application will resume with no additional charges to the applicant. The second main respect in which the board proposes to amend Rule 706 is to amend Rule 706E to create a bifurcated fee structure for admission on motion under Rule 705. And currently, the fee for a Rule 705 application for admission on motion is $1,500. That is paid all at once, but only after an applicant has submitted a preliminary questionnaire, which basically is an offer of proof that they can meet the experiential, educational requirements for admission on motion. Of course, the character and fitness requirements are handled in the ordinary course. What happens, what we find is that board staff spend a significant amount of time reviewing these preliminary questionnaires, and even if an applicant submits a questionnaire that shows that they clearly aren't going to pass, we sometimes will, or I'm sorry, clearly aren't going to qualify for admission on motion, we may offer them some suggestions like, you just took the bar exam in New York two years ago, and it looks like your score is high enough, perhaps you should consider applying under Rule 704A, or it looks like you're just coming into Illinois to work for a corporation, have you considered applying under Rule 716? So, we do spend some time reviewing these preliminary questionnaires, and the applicants get some benefit from it. But what happens is we don't get any fees to offset those administrative expenditures of time and resources until they file an actual full application under Rule 705. So the reason, so the idea behind the bifurcated fee structure is to allow the board to recoup some of its administrative costs and, without increasing the overall cost to the applicant.
We have one question that was on the prior amendment.
Thank you. Miranda Susie, thank you again for your explanations on the fees. I understand that the increased enhanced fees are below the Consumer Price Index.
Yes.
But with respect to sort of your analysis, the board's analysis, have you looked at what the anticipated budgetary constraints will be over maybe the next three to five years to see if this will account for what we anticipate the increased budget will be in that timeframe?
Yes, we have looked at the next three to five years. I will say that we have not factored in any additional costs for Next Gen, the Next Gen bar exam, which will become the Illinois bar exam in 2028. Currently, the National Conference of Bar Examiners has told us that their current pricing structure for Next Gen will remain in place through at least 2028, and even if we, we feel that we can, with the board's reserves, we can handle the increased costs of Next Gen through at least 2029, but beyond that, we may have to, we may have to come back for a further fee increase, which would be driven by the Next Gen costs. And I would add that one aspect of Next Gen is that it is entirely an online examination, and presently, we do not provide Wi-Fi capabilities for applicants, for examines at our test sites. We will have to do that going forward. NCBE and its vendor are offering assistance and counseling advice as to how to meet those requirements, but until we, until we get a little bit closer, and until, I'm sorry, NCBE, I should say, is still doing some beta testing to refine what those wire, what the wireless internet requirements will be for uploading and downloading the exam. So, as soon as that information becomes available, we will start to work with our exam sites to see what the needs will be to administer an online exam in those settings. And that would, once we have that information, we can factor it into our budget.
Thank you. Anything else in closing?
No, I, well, I guess, I will respond to Mr. Schuster's comments quickly. He has proposed, he suggests that perhaps the proposed amendment to bifurcate the fee structure for Rule 705 should wait until the board moves forward with an amendment of Rule 705 itself, and the board has considered that suggestion, but the changes we are proposing right now are, do not substantively change the requirements for Rule 705. They are administrative changes that we feel are, can be addressed through the change to Rule 706.
Thank you. Next is Justice Rochford to discuss Proposals 2501 and 2502.
Good morning. Mary Kay Rochford. I am a member of the Appellate Administrative Committee. I'm here on behalf of the committee, its members, and its chair, Justice Bertina Lampkin. I'm here to speak about 2501 and 2502. These proposals were approved by the Appellate Administrative Committee without dissent. Our committee has represented, representatives from each of the districts. The Rules Committee has received communications from Justice Dougherty, who is a member of the Appellate Committee. He gave you those comments in his personal capacity, but I am in full agreement with his comments, as is the committee. If you don't mind, I think I will start with 2502. It has been supported by the ISBA, the Appellate Lawyers Association, the Public Defender's Office, and the Office of the State Appellate Defender. This amendment seeks to make a change to Rule 23, which, to delete the requirement that a copy of Rule 23 didn't, doesn't no longer, would no longer be needed to be given. We think that the Rule 23s are now universally available on our court website. The website makes it fairly easy to find those Rule 23s, and they're also available on public research sites. So that is our proposed change. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to.
No.
Okay. So then, I would like to go on to Proposal 2501. 2501 suggests adding a Section 138, or a section, I'm sorry, a section A to Rule 13, and it also proposes corresponding comments. This proposal also makes proposed changes to Rule 606A and Rule 606D. The, the changes to, we are proposing to Rule 13 go hand in hand with the changes to Rule Now, this proposal has been supported by the IS, Public Defenders. The ISBA raised an issue as to some clarity needed to Rule 13. The Appellate Lawyers Association has suggested a change to, to our proposed change to Rule 13, which may correct the ambiguity that 13, which may correct the ambiguity that the ISBA raised. And it also has suggested that changes be made to Rule 605A1 and the admonishments that would be needed to be given by the circuit court. The committee has not addressed these proposed changes by the Appellate Lawyers Association. But speaking on my behalf, only I see, I see merit to the appellate lawyers' suggestions. And maybe I will address them when I talk about what exactly the committee is proposing as to 2501. We, we seek to amend Rule 13 to state that the, an attorney's period of representation continues until the time for filing a notice of appeal from the final judgment. We made this proposed change because we were also suggesting a change to Rule 606A, to amend that rule to, to provide that a trial court clerk would need to prepare, sign, and file a notice of appeal only when the defendant does not have an attorney, and after being advised of his appellate rights, request in open court or later in writing that they wish to appeal. We felt that this amendment balances the limitations of the role of the trial court clerk, but also protects an unrepresented defendant's right to appeal. Because we were making this suggested change, we also suggested the change to Rule 13G, 13-8, which would state that the period of representation of an attorney continues until the time for filing notice of appeal from the final judgment. The appellate lawyers has suggested some changes to that, which I don't want to speak on their behalf, but would say that the, it would continue until the time for filing the notice of appeal or the notice of appeal is actually filed. I'm paraphrasing, and I don't mean to step on their toes. But I think that would eliminate the concern of the ISBA that if a notice of appeal is filed early in that period of the 30 days in which a notice of appeal is required to be filed, that they still need to continue their representation and, as appellate lawyers point out, file a docketing statement. So I think the language that the appellate lawyers is suggesting would help clarify that concern of the ISBA. So if, we also suggested an amendment to Rule 606D, which simplifies the current language, deletes redundancies, and just clearly states forth that the notices of appeal must be done in accordance with the forms in Article 6. So if I have sufficiently confused you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna try and...
I tried to go in different directions between our proposals and the suggestions from...
Well, I'm gonna assume Mr. Horvath will be addressing 2502. But one of my concerns is that issue. Under the change, the representation continues through the time for filing the notice of appeal through final judgment, that period, that window. If I am the attorney and I file the notice of appeal, that's my obligation. I'm still representing the client till that point in time. I have concern then, what happens to me and my obligation once I've done that? I then need to file my motion to withdraw? I need to then go through all of those steps, even though I've protected the right for the appeal? So I, I'm representing the client. I gotta do it through the notice of appeal. To protect my backside, I better file that notice to make sure I'm not, just to, to make sure everything's okay. But I don't want to keep going on. I did this to protect, protect the client I was representing, but we have a clear understanding. I'm not going to do anything going forward. It's now incumbent on me to do a lot more to get out than it was before I filed that notice of appeal.
Well, would the Appellate Lawyers Association suggested change address that concern of yours?
Fair enough. I'll wait for him to step on up to the podium.
Yeah, it would, it clarifies that, that it would end either at the end of the period for filing the notice of appeal or at the time the notice of appeal was filed.
Okay. Andre.
Jack, just following up on what you said, excuse me, one of the practices we've been doing, at least in the criminal division, is at the time that we file the notice of appeal, to also file a request for the appointment of the appellate, the appellate defender's office. I mean, just to cover our backside, because once you file that notice of appeal, you kind of, you're kind of stuck there for a minute.
The car's ticking.
So how, how do I get out now? And the way that we've been doing it is to simultaneously file the notice requesting that the appellate defendant be appointed. I don't know if it's worked, but we've been doing it.
Well...
Would, again, I don't, obviously, I don't think that practice would necessarily need to change under our suggested amendment. But the appellate lawyers, maybe, again, suggested change would address that as well. You're doing it simultaneously. Their suggestion is that upon the filing of notice of appeal, your representation would end. The better practice probably would be to continue what is being done to also...
Just one more question, Justice. Does, does the rules state that, that once you file the notice of appeal, your representation ends?
At our suggested change was that the representation should continue until the time for filing a notice of appeal from the final judgment. The appellate lawyers are suggesting that because the notice of appeal is often filed before the end of that 30-day period, and that 30-day period also covers the requirement of filing a docketing statement, the better wording may be that it ends either upon the filing of the notice of appeal or the expiration of the time. So based on the concern that was raised also by the ISBA, in my personal capacity, I'm saying that maybe the appellate lawyers' suggested changes may address the concerns that are raised today and in the ISBA response.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll eagerly await Mr. Horvath to counter that.
I'm sure he'll be kind. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Judge Ortiz or the designee from the Access to Justice Commission to talk about proposal 2504.
My name is Sanjay Taylor. I'm here in my capacity as a commissioner of the Access to Justice Commission on behalf of Judge George Ortiz, the chair of the commission. Before you this morning is a proposal by the Access to Justice Commission to amend Supreme Court Rule 9. This proposal has been vetted by the Supreme Court's E-Business Policy Board. They've made some suggestions. We've incorporated those suggestions into the proposal. The amendments are intended to address issues that two stakeholders are having. One is self-represented litigants, SRLs, and those who assist SRLs, we call them our justice partners. For example, Illinois Court Help or Courts Navigator Network. These recommendations are based on a study that was done in 2022, which we reference in the letter to Ms. Murphy. The proposal seeks to expand exemptions that are available to SRLs. And at a very high level, the revisions to Rule 9, specifically subsection C, go to the structure, and it's divided into six parts, documents that may not be e-filed, that, for example, is an original will. An original will cannot be, the requirement that an original will be filed, be filed cannot be satisfied by e-filing it. And then there are certain documents that are automatically exempt from e-filing. For example, and these are, none of these are being changed, but just, for example, documents filed by someone who's incarcerated, SRL who's incarcerated. The real substance is in subsection that addresses documents that are exempt from e-filing upon good cause shown by certification. And here, we propose to expand the, what qualifies as good cause. And this would include, for example, documents filed by a self-repre, self-represented litigant who is not an attorney, and I'll explain that in a moment, but an SRL who does not have computer literacy or lacks the technology, the technological literacy to use the e-filing system, doesn't have an email account, doesn't have a credit or debit card or bank account, or simply has tried. And I think we've sort of all been in that situation where sometimes it just doesn't work for us, and, and so there's an exception for that as well. I had mentioned the carve-out for attorneys, what we are told by our friends at the E-Business Policy Advisory Board, that many attorneys use this exception when they shouldn't be using it because, as we all know, our rules of professional responsibility require that we maintain technological proficiency. And so we've carved out from the exception licensed attorneys. That is the, at a very high level, the changes that we're proposing to help it, help make it easier for SRLs to access the justice system. We've received feedback, for example, from SRLs who say that this process is intentionally hard and, and you're seeking to either have me just go away or hire a lawyer. And so we think that there's a need and a demand amongst the SRL community, and that's what we're trying to do with this proposal. I welcome any questions.
I only have one, kind of administratively, I guess, in reading the rule to qualify for certain things. You have to file the certificate of exemption. And if you don't have access to electronic method, how are you filing the certificate of exemption? Is the SRL bringing that down to the courthouse and filing it that way then?
I, I think that's the expectation, yes.
Good. Because it's kind of self-defeating if they file a certificate of exemption through an internet means and claiming they don't have access to internet. So I assume it would have to be then delivered to the court by the self-refer, self...
Or mailed or whatever.
Right.
Alternative means there might be to file besides e-filing.
The old way, prior to e-filing.
The good old days.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Judge.
In regard to the justice partners, particularly Illinois Court Help, I know they do a great job in helping SRLs, in that these amendments will provide even more focus on getting SRLs to e-file. Has the, either the commission or your policy, E-Business Policy and Advisory Committee considered what the cutoff is? Because SRLs might need to come in person, and when they do that, they can get more done than trying to do e-filing and taking up resources. It's just a thought, whether the city can, the commission as well as the board consider that.
Well, I, I think the assumption is that there are many SRLs that have the technology or technological proficiency and would prefer to e-file so they don't have to come down to court. And certainly, that's something that they're encouraged to do because, you know, our system is such that we want to encourage e-filing. But what this proposal really is intended to address is those SRLs who simply don't have the ability, for one reason or the other, to take advantage of the e-filing system. So I'm not sure I answered your question, but maybe I misunderstood it.
They, they gave some clarity. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I know that there is a lot of assistance already through Illinois Court Help and other non-for-profit to help self-represented litigants.
There help desk in the courthouse, if that's what you're referring to. And sometimes there's a benefit to come to court. But, you know, I mean, there's benefits, of course, in e-filing as well, so.
Other questions? Thank you. Next up, Justice Grant from the E-Policy, E-Business Policy Board on proposal 2503.
Good morning, Chairman Hanson, members of the committee, Justice O'Brien. I'm Cindy Grant. I am the vice chair of the advisory board. I also serve as a clerk of the Supreme Court. Last year, the court approved a proposal amending Rule 9. And in that proposal, it provided that clerks are to use the electronic filing rejection standards, which is a list of specific reasons for clerks to use when rejecting an electronic filing. The intent of the rule was to standardize the clerk's rejection reasons and to ensure that filers understood why their filing was being rejected. Since then, the advisory board has learned that some jurisdictions are adopting rules, adding reasons that are not currently within the standards. The proposed language before you makes it clear that the clerks are only to use the language in the, those standards. On behalf of Justice Dougherty, the chair of the advisory board and the advisory board itself, thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I guess what's the mechanism of enforcement when various clerks are not following, you know, what's put out there? Is this trying to rein that in?
It is trying to rein that in as well as we're, we're trying to occupy that ground of everybody knows why, what the, the universe of rejection reasons is. The advisory board is currently considering other proposals dealing with what you're asking, Chairman, which is what is the mechanism? If a clerk improperly rejects a document not within the standards, what would be the remedy for the filer?
The other question I had is what is the means or methods of kind of disseminating, here's a new rule, we want to make sure you all follow it. Do you all send that out to the clerks? Does somebody else take it upon themselves to do that? Who does that?
AOIC. Actually, when the rule became effective September 1, we had two trainings with the clerks as well as with the, because these standards are effective for the courts review. So even the appellate court clerks were, were subject to the training as well.
Good morning. Can you give us any examples of rules that clerks have put in place that are outside of the uniform standards?
Sure. One that we were particularly concerned about is rejecting based on an improper signature. The board had previously considered that when adopting these standards. We did not include it at that time. So we were, we were concerned that was the impetus for, for this clarification.
Any others? Okay, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Horvath from the Appellate Lawyers Association. You will be talking on, I have listed here four, four proposals.
That is correct, and thank you so much, Mr....
Pleasure seeing you again.
Mr. Chair, pleasure seeing you as well, members of the committee. Good morning. The Appellate Lawyers Association is always very enthusiastic to be able to weigh in on these proposals, so thank you for indulging us. There's all, already been extensive, very detailed discussion about these. I'll try not to repeat what others have said. I'll try not to repeat what's in our letter. But I did want to highlight a couple of points that we feel very strongly about and wanted to emphasize today for the committee's benefit and for the committee's consideration. And I'll cut right to the proposal 2501, the part that addresses Rule 13. And Justice Rochford very capably addressed what that proposal is intended to accomplish, and we are supportive of that proposal. But there's a bit of an adjustment to it that we've submitted to the committee. I, I think it's maybe not an overstatement to say that three words that make any practicing lawyer's blood pressure go up immediately are notice of appeal. Maybe the other three are statute... Maybe the other three are statute of limitations. Notices of appeal are just something that make practitioners inherently uneasy because there are already so many pitfalls that can be stepped in with respect to finding those notices. And this rule, I think, is intended to create some clarity for practitioners who are perhaps approaching the end of their representation of a client, but in our view, the clarity needed to go one step further. And that's why we propose some language that we hope will make it crystal clear that if that notice gets filed and there's still time within the 30-day deadline for filing the notice, the filing of the notice terminates the representation or effectively ends it. And that's why we proposed some language that clarifies that the representation will proceed as follows. An attorney's appearance in the trial court continues until the time for filing an appeal on behalf of the client has expired or a notice of appeal has been filed, except as to limited scope appearances and the like. And the particular issue that our membership was concerned with as appellate lawyers is the issue of a docketing statement. When one files a docketing statement in the appellate court, it's a representation to the appellate court that there's some level of ongoing involvement with the, with the client. So in our membership's view, it was important to clarify that once that notice of appeal gets filed, there's no ongoing obligation to file a docketing statement in the appellate court and further prolong a representation that's intended to end. So we think that the goal of the rule can be achieved with some further clarity, and that's why we would submit that proposed clarification to the committee for consideration. So that's our position on the Rule 13 aspect of Proposal 2501. And I'm happy to pause for a moment and answer any questions anyone may have.
Did your group consider including language that says whichever is first in your either-or?
We didn't actually contemplate that specific language, but as I look at what we've proposed, I could see how that may even further clarify the concept that we're trying to communicate. So I don't think that we would be opposed to such a clarification if it makes it even clearer what the delineation of the end of that representation is.
Does the proposal include language that determination ends with the filing of the notice of appeal?
I think, to answer that question, we intended to address that by including the language has expired or a notice of appeal has been filed. And so the concept that we were trying to communicate is once that notice gets filed, that's the end of the representation. There's no further obligations following that. Perhaps there are other ways to clarify it. The concern is we want to make sure it's clear. And so I don't mean to dismiss or shoot down any alternative language. We just wanted to make sure that within the comment period, we flagged the concept for the committee's consideration and gave the committee some food for thought.
Can we make it clearer? I mean, because the lawyer, you know, like you pointed out, once we get into making docketing statements, you put yourself in the appeal process. Can't we make it crystal clear that once that notice of appeal is filed, determination of the representation by the attorney ends? We can, we don't want it ambiguous. We want to be out.
I think the ALA is always in favor of further clarity. I think there may be room for even further clarification here, so long as that concept is communicated. It's, I think it's in everyone's interests, practitioners and the public at large, to have a very good clarity in a rule like this one.
Andre, I had the exact same thought. So as I was looking at this, I'm concerned about the practitioner who is not a regular appellate lawyer, who would come into this and not understand what their next obligation is. And I know we talked about that a little earlier with Justice Rockford. So I wrote down the filing of a docketing statement with the appellate court indicates an attorney's appearance will continue in the appellate court, something to that extent, just to make it clear that that, because I understand what you're saying, but that's not in what the proposal is or what the alternative language is.
I agree with the sentiment in that, you know, what prompted us to make this comment was the discussion of a docketing statement. And perhaps we should make explicit what was implicit in our thoughts in putting the proposal together. So again, I don't mean to suggest that we had the panacea for this entire issue, but, you know, the ALA respectfully submits that some clarification could help here, and we think it would be a good clarification for all parties concerned.
What about, instead of using the word the represent, an attorney's appearance in a trial court continues, it says instead, an attorney's appearance in the trial court ends at the time of filing the appeal or has expired, et cetera. So instead of using the word continues, you now have a finality word on the flip side, which is ends.
I suppose, Mr. Chair, that the way of clarifying that would be to say something to the effect of an attorney's appearance in the trial court ends at the time the notice of appeal was filed. And it's, again, perhaps an even further clarification of the concept.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Didn't do appellate work, but did trial work. And so if the attorney is in the trial court, they may not continue. What if they find an appellate lawyer to file the notice of appeal? Would they then end their representation by having another lawyer step up? Has that been addressed in the rule?
That's a very interesting and specific fact pattern. I don't think we were contemplating that when we looked at the language, but my solution to that issue would be that if trial counsel retains appellate counsel to file the notice, that too should end the representation of trial counsel. I think that would be a situation where that type of clarification would make sense. If there are any further questions on this, I'm happy to address them. If not, I just wanted to make a couple points on some of the other proposals.
Go ahead.
With regard to the second piece of Proposal 2501, that's the Rule 606 proposal, that concerns filing a notice of appeal by the clerk in criminal cases. It's a specific procedure in criminal cases. We have, as we've indicated in our letter, in favor of that clarification, in favor of that aspect of the proposal. We've just noted something for the committee's consideration with regard to amending the admonishments that are put forward before the criminal court when this situation arises. We didn't propose a formal change. We just sort of alerted the committee to the possibility that there may be a need for further clarification, given that this is a bit outside the scope of the proposal regarding Rule 606 to then go into Rule 605. But I wanted to emphasize that for the committee's consideration. It was something that the ALA wanted to do at least flag for further discussion. I'm happy to address any questions on that one as well. Pause for a moment before I proceed.
Go ahead.
And then with respect to Proposal Number 2502, which is another one that Justice Rochford very capably addressed, I just wanted to briefly note and reemphasize that it makes perfect sense to the ALA that you no longer should have to provide a copy of a Rule 23 order, given that in this day and age, with everything being electronically available on the Illinois Supreme Court's website, it's just an outdated requirement in the rule. So we're very supportive of that proposed change in 2502. I'll also just briefly remark on 2503. That was the proposal that Madam Clerk Grant addressed about the grounds for rejecting e-filings. And if I could just step back for a moment and say, it is a great concern of the ALA's membership to have clarity in the filing rejection procedures that the Illinois Supreme Court has on file. It's one of the, one of the refrains we consistently get from our members. They want to make sure they know when a filing is going to be rejected, and I can relate that to something we've been discussing here this morning, notices of appeal. When appellate lawyers file notices of appeal, I think it's become more customary to file them early to avoid a situation where something is rejected after a delay. But it's a topic of intense discussion among appellate lawyers and people who practice in the trial courts across the state as well. So the ALA is very supportive of clarifying and limiting the bases on which a clerk's office can enter a rejection notice for a filing that is made. And I don't want to go beyond my time allocation. With respect to Proposal 2504, Justice Taylor very capably described this proposal. The ALA has submitted a markup of the proposal that looks very extensive, and I reassure you it is not. The only issue the ALA wants to flag with this proposal, which is the proposal about the procedures for e-filing exemptions, is that there's a well-established rule in the Code of Civil Procedure where in a probate proceeding, one has to file an original version of the will with the clerk's office. And there's language in the comment to Proposal 2504, and that would be in Comment D that suggests, I don't think intentionally, but suggests that an exempt SRL, an exempt self-represented litigant could perhaps file an electronic version of a will. It's a highly technical issue, but we flagged these changes to suggest that perhaps there should be clarification to avoid any type of conflict between the comment in D and the established rule under the Code of Civil Procedure regarding the filing of original versions of the will with the clerk's office. So though there's a fair amount of red ink, it's all just interlineations and changes that are intended to address that very nuanced point that arises from the comment. And I'm happy to address any questions about that.
I had one, just, so what is the change or the recommendation you all offered on the comment regarding the will? Because I was-
The particular change that we're trying to suggest here is on this comment D, we've simply added a reference to under paragraph D. And that means that we've distinguished between exceptions to the requirement and exemptions from the requirement. And we've suggested phrasing the filing of a will as an exception to the e-filing requirement rather than as an exemption. And we think that rearrangement of the categorization may clarify that this is not intended in any way to conflict with the established practice under the Code of Civil Procedure for filing original wills in probate.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Have a good day. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's our last speaker for the morning on the proposals. We thank you for your attendance. We will stand in adjournment for our committee meeting, which will take place here immediately after. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.